Thank you, Mr. Young.
Just don't like that, just don't like that Planning Commission, y'all, so you know.
Welcome to the, whoa. We are testing new, new equipment, so I didn't realize it was that loud. So, welcome to September 1st, 2016 Murfreesboro City Council Meeting. Councilmember Bill Shacklet has our prayer and our pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to introduce to you a new official with our city, a new city school board member, David Settles. David is going to do our opening prayer for us, and he's also the pastor of the Living Word Worship Center. So, David?
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, humbly we give thanks to you for the blessings of liberty and for the generous provision that you so graciously bestowed on this country, this state, and this city. We come now to ask your continual blessing and guidance for this council. May they be led by your wisdom in the execution of their leadership for the governance of this great city, Murfreesboro, Tennessee. This we ask in faithful expectation and for your glory and honor. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmembers, we have a special presentation tonight. Isabella, Ms. Williams, and parents, if you guys want to come up too? I know you have some hardware, y'all may want to, sure, absolutely.
I'll hold it up.
Okay. Councilmembers, we have someone special here tonight. Got notified of an accomplishment that Ms. Isabella attained this past year, and so we thought it would be fitting to prepare a proclamation for her. So, let me read you the proclamation. Whereas Isabella Williams is a ten-year-old fifth grader at Barfield Elementary School. She is the daughter of Don and Wendy Williams of Murfreesboro. She is an excellent student that has maintained an A-plus average in school and has always been placed on the principal's list each grading period. She plays third base on our softball team and competes in horse shows locally with her pony Reba and volunteers with ASAP Animal Rescue. Whereas Bella has finished her summer break with an amazing accomplishment. She competed in the United States Interregional Highland Dance Championship for her age group in Grand Rapids, Michigan, in July 2016. This is the most prestigious competition in the United States for this type of dance. Her performance this year earned her the title of the U.S. National Champion. Whereas Isabella won the Southeast Regional Championship for the last two years, which is held in Savannah, Georgia, the six regions from across the United States send their top three dancers that qualify to compete in the United States Championship. She competed against eighteen dancers in her age group. Her win this year will automatically qualify Isabella to compete in the United States Championship next year, which will be held in Salt Lake City, Utah. And whereas winning the national championship was a goal Isabella has been dreaming about since she started dancing, it has taken a lot of hard work, dedication, and determination to achieve this goal. Bella's Scottish heritage runs deep. Her great-grandparents immigrated to the United States from Scotland in the early 1930s. Many of her relatives throughout the years have been involved in Highland dancing, including her grandmother and mother, who are also, who were also her teachers. And whereas Isabella, Isabella's ultimate lifelong goal is to travel to Scotland to compete in the World Highland Dance Championships held in late August. Now therefore, I, Shane McFarland, Mayor of the City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim August 18th, 2000, they were a week late, so we'll do September 1st, it'll be a date that we'll do it to, August 1st, or August 18th and September 1st as a day to recognize Isabella Williams and call on all citizens to join me in recognizing, commending her on all of her accomplishments. Congratulations.
Thank you. Stand up. Thank you. Congratulations. And hopefully we'll see you here next year, right? All right. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
We've had, we've had two consecutive weeks of some special young ladies who've made some great accomplishments, so I hope we get to keep doing many of these ceremonial things with all the, all the kids we have here in Murfreesboro. All right, you have a consent agenda in front of you. And we also have items K and L have been deleted from, from this, this consent agenda.
After those deletions, and if there's no questions, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. For second readings, we'll consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 15OZ-66 to zone approximately six acres along Spike Trail and Maya Drive, which is Fox Fire Court. Is planned residential development PRD District simultaneous with annexation, Old South Properties, Inc., applicant 2016-419.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move to new business and conduct a public hearing and consider for approval of certificate of compliance for Anseuia Desai Borough's House of Booze, 902 Memorial Boulevard.
Mayor, this application is for an existing location. It'd be a new owner and a name change, and otherwise the application is in order.
Okay. All right. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll, and we'll consider for passage this approval of certificate of compliance.
Is right, everything in good order?
It is.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider recommendations of Assistant Human Resource Director regarding the Employee Wellness and Reward Program.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. The city is recommending council's approval for a new wellness vendor to begin January 1, 2017. As many of you are aware, in 2012, council approved Interactive Health Solutions as the city's first wellness provider. They did a great job for us, however, participation has declined over the years. In June of this year, NRCSP was issued for a wellness vendor. The goal was to find a vendor that would increase plan participation, incentivize employees, and provide a year-round incentive, ultimately shifting employees' mindsets to be one of continuously engaging in healthier living. In August, finalist interviews were conducted, and as a result, Humanovitality, or Go 365, that's, that'll be their name come January 1, is being recommended as the city's new wellness provider. Humanovitality offers health risk assessments, wellness exams, and a rewards program where employees can earn points year-round to spend at an online mall. Every employee full-time will be eligible to participate in the plan, but here's where it's a little bit different. Employees can choose to participate in the health risk assessment and the exam and receive a premium reduction of $200 annually, regardless of the outcome. Now, before, they had to do the wellness exam and the comprehensive, the risk assessment, then depending on what their outcome was, they had to wait till the next year, have those same results or better, and then they could receive a premium discount. So, no longer is there a wait, and no matter what the outcome is, they'll receive a premium reduction. That'll be $200 annually, but they'll also be able to earn points to spend at an online mall, which will be valued up to $300 annually. Now, that, those dollars, they can be carried year-over-year if they want to purchase bigger items, they can purchase Fitbits, gift cards, bicycles, and so there's a lot of incentive for employees. The other option, if employees choose not to participate in the health risk assessment or exam, they used to just be out of the plan. Now, they won't receive the $200 premium reduction, but they are still eligible to earn up to $300 annually to be able to shop in the mall. Now, I met with the Wellness Committee earlier this week, that consisted of fire police, water and sewer, and parks and rec, and so they were excited about the new plan and the new option. I should say that, right now, we've got about a little less than thirty percent participation, and so we're hoping to engage at least double that with this new incentive. Employees can earn points based on activities that they do throughout the year, so they can take their Fitbits, phone, apps, and they can connect to the onsite, online site, and for every step that you take, you get points. If you take wellness classes, you get points. If you take the health risk assessment and the physical exam, and it shows that you have, you know, conditions, maybe you need help with diabetes, weight management, there'll be classes online that cater to that for you, and if you take those classes, you'll earn points. We'll be doing an in-house video explaining the program in its entirety. We'll also be increasing our Wellness Committee to have a champion at every facility at the city. Our goal is to just overwhelm employees with information so that they know about the plan, they know how to use the plan. We'll have competitions throughout the city, department against department, to try and make it fun and interactive, 5Ks, half marathons, we can include those things that we're currently doing in the plan. We can also set beacons at Patterson and at Sportscom so that if employees go to those facilities, they can link their Fitbit or their phone to that beacon, and then they'll get points for doing activities at those sites. And so, we're really excited about that. The financial impact depends on participation, but our consultants believe that it'll be approximately $110,000, which is about $7,000 over what we did last year, but if we had that same plan with our current vendor, it would probably be about twice that much. By approving the regular agenda, council will be approving the agreement with Humanovitality from January 1, 2017, to December 31, 2019. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Is there any downside to the employees? I mean, as far as what the employees see here? I just want to make sure I understand it.
I don't, I don't think there's a downside at all to the employees. I think this is a plan that, that kind of catered to both. Before, we, we said, hey, it was based on, we initially said it was based on a small incentive, and then we said it was based on results, and then it was, you know, based on year-over-year results. And so, like I said, participation has dwindled off, and even with the premium reduction that they're getting now, we're still at less than thirty percent. So, we figure if we try this new approach, it'll increase the participation.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for your time.
Mayor, I think this is gonna pump some new life into our wellness program. I think it, I like the idea of the different departments kind of in competition with each other, create a little incentive, and the point system may turn out well. I think the HR department has put together a good program, and I move for approval.
Second. Motion is second, Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider recommendations of the Fire and Rescue Chief.
Mayor, Mayor and Members of Council, the first item that we have this evening is the approval of a professional services agreement with the medical director. Dr. Galloway is currently the medical director for Rutherford County EMS. This agreement would also make him our medical director. He would, our licensed personnel and certified personnel, EMRs, emergency medical responders, advanced EMTs, paramedics would all practice under his license. It would give us more direct, basically, results over protocols. He's gonna be more interactive with our protocols, and these provisions allow us to go to the next level with our advanced emergency medical technicians, providing advanced-level BLS care, as well as our paramedics going to ALS-level care in the future. The, we're still underway with the plans to be at full-level BLS care by October the 1st of this year. We're currently conducting training with our employees with numerous medical devices that we have not been able to use in the past, including IV medications, King Airways establishing IVs, and there's five other medications that we have not been allowed to practice in the past that we will be delivering by October the 1st. We're actually rolling those out as the training is delivered, placing the equipment on the trucks, and that will happen as soon as this agreement's in place with Dr. Galloway assigning, signing off on the protocols, the advanced protocols. Paramedic training is continuing to occur within that timeframe and will advance more after the 1st of the year, and by July the 1st of next year, all of the paramedics that we have in the department will be functioning at full ALS capabilities, which is even more skills that they will be able to deliver on medical calls, and we will have at least four engine companies and potentially five that will be designated advanced life support engine companies, and those engine companies will respond to approximately seventy-five percent of the calls that we answer medical-wise. We would place those on the busiest engine companies. And so, this, these provisions of this medical director's scope allow us to function at this level, and that's the reason that we need this, this contract agreed upon. The budget for this, money is already budgeted for this item in, in the current operating budget.
Chief, you have accomplished a lot in a short year. We've been working on this a long time, and we've come to many roadblocks, and you have worked through those roadblocks to put this into action, which will provide much better medical service in a shorter time for our citizens. So, I thank you, and I say full speed ahead, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Is the term of this agreement, or is it just a year renewal each year, or?
No, sir. It's, it's basically, I think the terms of the agreement are, let me look at it real quick.
Two years initial term?
Yeah, two years.
There's no other questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Chief?
And the second item on the agenda is the approval to purchase the property from the Murfreesboro Housing Authority of what is now Franklin Heights Housing Development. There is a, I think we have a drawing in the, your packet, if we don't have that drawing, we'll put it up on the screen now that the, of what the facility will look like in the future. We received BZA approval, or Board of Zoning Appeals approval, from this project a couple of weeks ago, and we are looking to move forward with this project with the purchase from the Murfreesboro Housing Authority. This has been tentatively agreed upon by Housing and Irving Development at a federal level, and we're planning on converting the site into what you see in the, in the drawing. Of course, this will go to Planning Commission and seek full approval of that. This is a, this, what you're approving tonight is the actual sale of the purchase, or the purchase of the property from the Housing Authority to us.
Chief, you think you'll be able to do, I know we've, we've gone through the training facility, I think this is something we've worked on or talked about for?
Five years.
Yeah, five years, so is this, do you feel like you'll be able to accomplish what you need to accomplish?
Yes, this, this site gives us 8.9 acres to accomplish what we need to accomplish at the, at the facility. It includes everything that we were gonna have included at the Coleman Farm, with the exception of a rifle range, and I know that the Police Department, along with the city management team, is, is looking for options on where to place a rifle range that they could utilize for that, but it's, it'll include a driving pad, a, a drill tower for us, a burn building that we're capable of doing live burns in, as well as we're gonna leave five of the apartment complex buildings in place to utilize those. It provides a great streetscape for us, it provides excellent search and rescue training opportunities in those apartments. They're constructed out of concrete block and concrete and brick, and so they're virtually indestructible as far as being able to do training in those, in those buildings that still exist, as well as a classroom building with office space for a training staff and some storage space for training props and otherwise.
How about just smoke issues? You know, when I used to pass by the old one up there, a couple blocks down the way, they used to just burn big piles of wood, and it would billow out smoke everywhere. Do we have to worry about that here?
We will not have to worry about it as much. We've designed the facility, as you can see, everything that's, the most residents that we have adjoining the facility are along Kinslow Avenue, and we've placed on purpose the driving pad and the K-9 and the agility training areas next to those residential properties, in an effort to place all the practical props away from residences. Those, most of the practical training area will be along New Salem Highway, the, the drill tower, things like that, and the burn building. The, the neighbor behind us, where those buildings are and where that burn building is, the two-story burn building, is a, is a brick and block company, mainly functions during the daytime hours, but they're, they're creating a lot of dust in their efforts as well, so I don't think we're gonna impact them with smoke. The general path of smoke on normal days or the normal wind direction will actually blow the smoke along the street where the buildings are remaining, along that back street, in that direction, and should not affect any residences, or we're hoping they'll limit or minimize the effect on any residences. But we will also be burning primarily Class A materials, which is clean wood and wood products, non-treated, non-painted wood and that type of products. We have to comply with NFPA 1403 when we're doing live burns, and they're very prescribed and, and very orderly. It, that has changed tremendously over the last five to 10 years. In the past, when the old Fire Academy was in place, you would burn truly petroleum and other, other products when you were doing live fire training, and that's no longer allowed either by TDEC or by NFPA, and so it'll greatly change the dynamics for smoke.
Okay, thanks.
And where are the funds for these?
We included them in the capital improvement fund.
CIP, okay.
We've already borrowed the money.
There's no more questions, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider recommendations of city engineer regarding property acquisition for Lidle Street Phase II improvements. Mr. Griffith?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The construction is underway for Phase II of the Lidle Street improvements. City, city staff is, is acting as a project manager for the improvements to Lidle Street, which will serve as an entrance to, to the new judicial building and associated parking garage. The council previously approved the purchase of Right of Way and/or easements from six of the properties impacted by the project. These properties are primarily easements located east of Maple Street, near the proposed judicial building and, and the parking garage. City staff has now received the appraisals for, for the remaining nine properties that are impacted by the project. I've attached a summary of the appraisals for your review. The Right of Way acquisition from these properties is more extensive as it includes the purchase of a significant amount of private parking spaces and converts them to public spaces. The parking spaces will be converted to 45-degree angle in order to facilitate the expected increase in traffic flow to the new judicial building. Due to the conversion of the parking from private to public, the appraisers have included damages to several of the commercially zoned buildings. The percent and amount of the damages have been included for your summary. I've outlined in the paragraph below how we'll proceed with this acquisition, and we plan on doing that beginning as, as soon as tomorrow or Monday, when we get the letters out. The Right of Way and easements to be acquired will be funded from the current bond issue and/or previous TML loans. Staff recommends approval of the acquisition of Right of Way and easements from the nine remaining properties for the improvements to Lidle Street from Barker Street to Church. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Griffith, when, when is the expected completion of this? Is it gonna tie in with the completion of the judicial building?
It is, we-
That's two years, though, isn't it?
It, May of 2018, so a little less, a little less-
Pretty close, yeah, a little less. Are you, are you gonna finish it and then wait on them, or are you just gonna go slow and?
No, there, there actually should be, the, I think the judicial building, the current, matter of fact, they're making just phenomenal progress on it, it's currently April of 2018. So, it's within just a few days.
It just seems like it took such a short time for you to do the first phase, and now the second phase is-
It is, this, this is not just, we actually had to extend the limits of the, the project for this, 'cause we actually have to go around both buildings, not completely around them, but-
Right.
Kind of a U-shaped around the parking garage, and then completely around the judicial building. So, it's a little bit longer project. I think that project was about 2.3 million, the initial one, and this one's about 5.2 million, so about twice as long, and about two years.
Okay, thank you.
Sir.
More motion?
There's no other questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Consider for adoption Resolution 16R-20 honoring Councilmember Ronald T. Washington for his dedicated service to the city of Murfreesboro. So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We have two board and commission appointments. The disciplinary review board appoint Mr. Zach Leester in Historic Bottoms Study Steering Committee. We had gotten an email from Kathleen Herzog asking if we could appoint someone from Main Street on there, so they had recommended Mr. Sean Gillon there.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Have one more board and commission, it's not necessarily an appointment, but we need to elect a vice mayor. I move Mr. Young to be vice mayor.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
I didn't get fired.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Yes.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that.
Any beer permits?
Thank you.
Yes, sir, we have one denied. We have a restaurant at 125 Wendell Wood Drive, Suite A. It's a new location, and the application is in order. They do need to finish their building codes inspections, so if you approve it, we will issue the permit after all the inspections have been completed.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any statements?
Not tonight.
Any other business from staff or city council?
I have one item, Mayor. This is another in a series of work packages with Bell Construction for the Police Headquarters Project. As you know, Bell has been delivering us work packages to continue to make progress for a December twenty-seventeen completion. This is package three and four. This is actually the bulk of the construction for the building. It does establish a guaranteed maximum price of twenty-point-one million dollars. This has all been part of our capital improvement plan. Bell, Ken, James, Ken and the project architect in the city continue to collaborate to find ways to reduce cost without impacting the building's functionality or its design and look, so we do make that as a recommendation. This, again, is very consistent with what we've seen throughout the course of our master planning for this building, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We knew this was coming.
We knew this was coming.
And after talking to you, and you seem to feel like that the architects and the builder and the city are working extremely well together to cut costs and find ways to save money.
Yes, sir.
So with that, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you. Any other business?
Want to formally welcome, we had a swearing-in ceremony before, but welcome back, Councilman Shacklet, Councilman Smotherman, and then also want to welcome Kurt Wade to his first